Welcome to the Stratford Zoning Commission. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 7:30 PM. Is every Commissioner ready, convenient? Everyone's schedule is now good? Excellent. This is a continued hearing of 795 James Farm Road. This is now the third hearing on the subject, I believe. Continuance from last night, June 28th, and again, continued from June 20th. So we'll start right where we left off with Attorney Kubik's presentation.
Good evening. Joseph Kubik of Harlow-Adams and Friedman for Judith Kermey, Kathleen Martinez, and Concerned Citizens Group of Stratford. Before, I've got to have a few items that we have to submit. When is a package? It's a total package of, well, fifty letters, forty letters from neighbors, and another fourteen letters from neighbors in bundles. Four sets each. I'd like to submit them for the record. They're all in opposition to the petition. And to keep the record clear, I filed what was entitled an amended verified pleading last week, and it was amended because it was dated June of 2016. We had had an original verified pleading dated May 28, 2016. So just so there's no confusion that there was an amended pleading, I'm going to submit the actual original verified pleading dated May 28 to establish that change. And yes, Mr. Forrester, it says 795 Jones Farm Road. That's a typo.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have certainly a lot more to do, but we have some experts here that we'd like to present sooner rather than later so they can get on to their business. One is Sergeant Ianati, Traffic Division, Town of Stratford. The other is Mr. Loiz, who is the Director of EMS Services. And who would like to come first, gentlemen? And they're going to state their name, and your position, and your background, and then what you have to say about the application.
Good evening. Lieutenant Frankie Ianati, Stratford Police Department. I am currently signed as the Division Commander for the Traffic Division and have been in that position since April of 2014. Upon review of the plans, some considerations and some concerns have been arisen or come up with the Stratford Police Department. First and foremost is the one driveway for the project. The driveway itself has a steep slope which could impact emergency vehicles, especially in inclement weather. Should there be any incident in front of that driveway, it does then, again, hamper any emergency vehicles from gaining access to the complex. We would like to see a second entrance added to the property. This way, it will facilitate vehicles getting in and out. Emergency vehicles, once they get in, it's going to be hard to turn around and get back out, especially under icy conditions with the slope again. Our next item that we looked at was the impact that will have on the traffic. Well, we did do a traffic study over a 60-hour period with traffic counters, and during that 60-hour period, we did count for 4,364 vehicles traveling that roadway on a normal day, and that's over 60 hours. So again, adding 72 units is going to obviously add some traffic to the area, as well as the construction project itself will increase and impact the traffic for that area.
Excuse me, just for a moment, Officer. Could you just repeat that number again?
Two thousand three hundred and sixty-four in a 60-hour period.
Thank you.
What we did with our counters, they account for the number of cars and the average speeds. So speed, the average speeds was between 37 and 40 miles per hour, but the number of cars is what we're looking at. Again, with the project like this, we do expect that it would be reasonable to have a long road closure. They have to bring in a lot of fill. We're going to assume that's going to be a lot of truck traffic up in the area. It is a residential area, as well as a cut-through for commuters, as well as if they do any construction into the roadway, that being sewer projects and such. These road closures will affect emergency traffic responding to the neighbors up in that area, and we have several condos up there as well, Ornoke and such. So this could delay our response time by as much as two to three minutes per call on an average day without heavy traffic. So that will impact, again, the residents and the town as far as our response time and our ability to take care of the residents up in that area. So as such, if the Board does choose to approve the project, I would strongly recommend that these traffic considerations be taken under advisement, as well as the addition of a second entry and exit point for the complex for both the safety of the residents of the complex and the emergency responders that respond to the property.
Any questions from the Commission for the police officer today? Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You're familiar with the Avalon Bay Project?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The Avalon Bay Project?
Yes.
Was there any increase in, a detrimental increase in traffic incidents as a result of the construction?
I cannot speak on that. I was not in traffic at the time. I was in the Detective Bureau, so I had no interaction with that project.
Does the Police Department have contingency plans in place for road closures as a result of construction, as example, South Main Street?
Road closures, yes. We would have to divert traffic to a road closure instead of detour, and again, the effect that we would have is the delayed time on the response.
Do you have any statistical data that you can present to us regarding delayed responses to lordship during the time of construction when South?
That I do not have, no.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the, yes, Commissioner?
Yes. If this ever project went through, whatever, with all this traffic, would a police officer be there stationed all day long to stop and direct traffic, to let tri轴s, so on and so forth, in and out of there if this fill was to be?
That would be up to the contractors. They would have to hire and make arrangements for the same, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we would assume that if they're going to bring in the amount of fill that they mentioned in their report, that it would take quite a bit of time and quite a few trucks going up and down the roadway. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So do you have any projection on what emergency response time would be if James Farm Road is closed for any sort of, whether it's this project or any project?
I did not do it myself. I know that the Deputy Fire Chief did drive the route, and by driving the route that he did at a normal rate of speed during normal traffic, not heavy traffic, it added an extra two and a half minutes, I believe, to his travel time, but you'd have to ask him for the exact time.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any final, any further questions for the police officer? If not, Attorney Kubik, floor is yours.
Thank you. Sergeant, you can take off. Mr. Loiz, just state your name, your position, and your background.
Good evening. Mike Loiz, Director of EMS for the Town of Stratford. EMS provider and EMS operator for somewhere in the area of 20 years. I can't reiterate anymore clearly what the Lieutenant just said. The access issues of having only one entry point to the facility or to the complex is a concern for all of us in public safety. Obviously, the construction and all the work that goes into that would impact our response times. Yes, there are contingency plans. Yes, we can work around that to a degree, but again, you know, it is going to slow things down for us. What I'm most more concerned about, I think, with that one entryway is when we put an ambulance into that complex to move a patient to the hospital, in inclement weather, it's going to be very difficult to get them out. And I don't want to be in a situation where, you know, we might have a delay getting them, moving them forward to the hospital. So, you know, I'll keep it short and sweet on that. Our biggest concerns are access through that one entryway and any delays in patient care or response time that we might have. So again, if I could encourage you, urge you to, you know, look more closely at those issues and, you know, factor that into any decisions made.
I'll open this up, the questions to the EMS Director. Commissioner Pepin?
EMS only comes from over here?
No, we do have, we do have an ambulance up in Ornoke.
In Ornoke?
Yep. And the potential delays that we look at, we probably would do about fifteen, eight to fifteen calls a month in that general vicinity.
In that general vicinity.
So that would be the potential exposure for, for any, you know, potential delays. I think that the, the, I guess, if you want to call it a traffic study that Deputy Chief Gottfried performed, would apply to us as well, the two and a half minutes of, you know, potential delay.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So according to the Fire Department personnel, they estimate about two and a half minutes of delayed response. So, and that's not, and that would be the same for an ambulance or a fire truck?
Yeah.
I know there's a lot of EMS professionals and certified EMS staff also on fire apparatus as well. It's not just on ambulances. But is there any other sort of impediment that would happen to any sort of ambulance apparatus?
It would have, the biggest issue, I think, is that grade, that entry grade. Getting stuck on that hill, coming out of that hill, you're, the grade, you're basically looking at the sky, and coming, you know, coming in and out of that is going to be a potential problem. I don't know yet if we would potentially bottom out an ambulance on that lip. I don't think that's the case, but I'm still looking into that.
So you don't really have any projection on what, kind of like, what's the maximum slope or maximum grade that would kind of trigger a apparatus failure to negotiate such slopes or such grades?
The Fire Department does, I do not.
Okay, so that's more of a Fire Department question?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the EMS Director?
What is a, what is a regular or average emergency response time?
The, well, the average right now to your area is, I want to say it's five eighteen?
I'm sorry, again?
Five minutes and eighteen.
Five minutes, eighteen seconds, okay. With certain medical emergencies like cardiac arrest or anything like that, what is, what is the response time in order that, I guess, in order to be able to treat them or save lives?
That's, that's a kind of a loaded question. The answer is as fast as possible.
As fast as possible?
Yeah.
So you're saying it would be a two and a half minute delayed response?
Potential delay.
So you're saying your testimony is that it would, on average, be seven and a half minutes?
Could, could be, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the EMS Director? If not, Attorney Kubik, the Forresters.
Just a little unclear. I think the average response that you were asking about was from the Ornoke Firehouse to James Farm Road. I think you were thinking of the main station.
Okay.
Yeah, just, and just in case Attorney Kubik didn't speak into the microphone, he was asking response time from the Ornoke Fire Station to James Farm Road.
Just from Ornoke?
From Ornoke, yes.
So we're talking?
From the nearest, from the nearest station.
Okay, so we're talking probably three minutes, and then you tack on?
And then you tack on two and a half minutes, so we're talking about a five and a half minute response time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the EMS Director? If not, Attorney Kubik, the Forresters.
At this time, I'd like to introduce retired Judge Paul Kermey. F. Paul Kermey?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Secretary, Mr. Pansky, members of the Commission, thank you for listening to my comments. I don't envy you your position, and having observed you a few times, I think I'd be running to my psychiatrist right after one of these meetings or to the nearest bar, but you have amazing patience. I'd like to stress some of the most fundamental aspects of this application and what I believe are clear defects. And it's like the forest and the trees, no pun intended with this area, but it's like seeing the individual trees that you're seeing, one issue after another after another individually, but without seeing the entire picture. I want to show you the entire picture from a legal viewpoint, because this is critical. You recall at the beginning of the presentation by Attorney Bellis that he referred to the burden of proof being on the opponents to show that this project did not meet the standards of the statute. That is true in part, but it's somewhat misleading, not deliberately, but it's somewhat misleading. Every petition under the Affordable Housing Act or any other petition before this Board has a certain minimal burden of proof. Lawyers called it presenting a prima facie case. In other words, the applicant must show you, without any opposition at all, must show you that it or he or she has met the specific requirements of the statute. Now, why is that important? It's critically important for this reason. The statute requires that city sewers and public water be available for this project. It's a requirement. That's part of their burden to show that they have it, and they clearly do not. In their application, they have presumed that it's available, and that's not enough to support a petition. I've been here, a few hearings, watching other petitions come forward, and I'll give you a perfect example.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't object to this witness's testimony on board here. He hasn't told us his credentials, who he is, his name. I don't even know who this gentleman is. He's proposing to give legal advice.
Well, I'll tell you. I'll tell you. I'll tell you. I'll answer the question.
Excuse me, just a moment. Judge Kermey, could you please state your name, record, and your background for public?
Sure. First of all, I didn't give my address. I'm from 45 Alexandra Drive. I live with my wife Judith, who is one of the parties represented by Attorney Kubik. I've been a lawyer for nearly 50 years, licensed under the State of Connecticut, and I've been a judge of probate here, elected for 36 years. I believe I know the law. I know what a prima facie case means. I've read the statutes. I'm familiar with them, and I routinely deal with matters of law about which I'm going to speak. I don't care if you hold me as an expert or not. What I'm saying is relevant for you to consider, and I'd like to finish before you open your mouth. Let me finish. Let me, please, stop until I finish. I mean, I'm.
Order, 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 gentlemen?
Yes, it does.
Gentlemen?
It's common courtesy.
Gentlemen, I'll let Judge Kermey have his piece, and then Attorney Bellis, if you will, cross-examine after that. You may.
I want to object to the record that this gentleman's trying to give advice to the zoning commission.
Oh, no, I'm simply explaining the law.
And there are, there's a town council that is here present today, and if the zoning commission had any questions on the law, they certainly seek their own counsel.
Let me, let me make a comment here. Attorney Bellis, he's not an expert. He's an attorney for the petitioner. He was giving you legal advice or legal opinions regarding the burden of proof. He's done that on many issues. No one objected to his being able to do that. Of course he can. He represents the petitioner. You're not going to object to Attorney Kubik's making similar comments on behalf of the various parties he represents. This is ridiculous. Now, what I have to say is relevant. I don't care how you classify it. I don't care what you think of me personally, but you have to deal with the law. And the law says that the petitioner must prove the elements of the petition. Simple as that. I said before that sewers and water, they are presuming are available. That is a fatal presumption. Fatal. The examples I want to show you I've seen the last few days here in this Commission. A petitioner comes up and says, "I want to put in a store or something in a certain place," and the zoning laws require a certain number of parking spaces, certain access. And so the petitioner tells you, "Well, I realize I don't have the number of parking spaces that are required, but, you know, approve this petition conditionally, and I'll negotiate with the guy next door." Or if the Town of Stratford happens to be the owner of the property next door, "I'll negotiate with the Town of Stratford for the parking places, and you just approve this conditionally." You would laugh that person out of this room. Of course, they can't do that. They have to come in and show you that they have the means to meet the standards of the petition. There's nothing different here. They can't meet that standard because they have no control over the sewer extension. They're presuming it's going to happen. No, that's not right. They can't presume for the Water Pollution Control Authority, sitting as a town council or vice versa. They cannot do that. They didn't come into this petition, with this petition, with a letter of agreement with a quarryant saying that we have a contract to put in water here. They've simply assumed that the town or someone else was going to do it on their own. That's their burden, not ours, and it's not yours. Hold them to the standards of the law, because unless they can show that they have those things, this petition should be dismissed out of hand. Now, let them go to the WPCA. Let them go there. Now, let me say something else. You've seen many petitions in your lifetime, and even as Commissioners, where there was a force in favor of a particular development. The biggest one I can think of was Ornoke Village, and I remember that well when I was a town councilman. The town manager, the town council, the Economic Development Commission, everybody was behind it. All of the towns, departments, and people were helping the petitioner get his plan together. Who do you say in favor of this? Do you see the mayor here? Do you see any town councilmen here pushing this? The only one pushing this is the petitioner himself. And so you can't presume that the town, acting through its various departments, is in favor of this. You can't presume that. They have to show that. Let them go to the Commission, the Water Pollution Control Commission, ask for approval before you act on it, because if they do not, the petition is fatally defective. Thank you.
Attorney Kubik?
Do I have an opportunity to cross-examine the witness?
I'm sorry.
Do I have an opportunity?
Yes, Attorney Bellis does have an opportunity to cross-examine Judge Kermey.
Are you stating that the experts, the witness is an expert? Is that, is that the basis of it? He's not an expert witness. There's no cross-examination of non-expert witnesses.
That's funny. I can cross-examine him. He doesn't have to be an expert. He called him, as, he called him to testify. I'd like to cross-examine him.
No, we're cross-examining, we cross-examine experts, not laypeople.
He didn't come across as a layperson.
Are you disclosing, are you declaring that he's an expert?
I don't have to declare anything, Joe.
If you're going to cross-examine him, then I believe you're declaring him as an expert.
Attorney Bellis, what's your question?
My question is to the witness.
Attorney, if you're going to ask a question, I have an objection to that. Attorneys can't come up before you or the law and ask questions of other attorneys.
Well, I'm not an attorney. I'm a town volunteer.
That's right.
The Commission ultimately has to determine what testimony and evidence it deems reasonable for this application. That burden is on us to make that determination as individual Commissioners. It is up to us to determine whether Judge Kermey or whether Attorney Bellis is experts or expert witnesses. So that's a determination we have to make in deliberative administrative sessions. So Attorney Bellis, you may ask the applicant, I mean, the witness a question.
Sir? I asked for clarification. Are you treating me as an expert witness?
Yes. I am under the presumption that you are.
All right, well, if you are, I'll answer the question. If I'm simply someone offering an opinion as an attorney, and that's what I have done, he has no right to cross-examine me. None. And no one here has the right to order me to do so, and I stand on that principle.
You also have the?
If you're an expert, then I'll do it, but not as an attorney, and I am an attorney.
You also have the right not to answer any question, too.
But you're the Chair. You control the flow of the business. You make the determinations about what's proper and what's not proper.
The Attorney Bellis has the right to ask the question, and you have the right to answer or not answer the question as you see fit.
Very well.
Sir, are you familiar with the case National Association of Peoples versus the Planning and Zoning of North Branford? It's an appellate court case, therefore binding on our Superior Court under 37 Con App 788, 1995, wherein they said an application was filed, when an application was filed to create an affordable housing zone, there was no requirement for approval of the WPCA prior to the approval of the zone change. Are you familiar with that case, sir?
I don't recall.
Thank you.
As we stand here.
Attorney Kubik? Floor is yours.
Thank you. So, you know, I'd like, I'd like to remind the Commission that I raised the issue of the fact that none of the experts are here by the authority of the Bankruptcy Court. They haven't been permitted to represent or be involved in this case. They, they have to understand that they're not being, they can't be paid for these, their services. Any monies they've received, they have to do what's known as disgorged. They have to pay it back by order, when an order from the Bankruptcy Court is presented. So I don't know if they know they're not being paid or not supposed to be here, but even Attorney Bellis has not been officially approved or been authorized to be involved in this activity. And I'll get into the application process when even the application, when it was filed, was never authorized by the Bankruptcy Court. But in that line, I wanted to submit another document because it has to do with payment of taxes and bankruptcy. This is a stipulated order granting adequate protection concerning 795 James Farm Road with the Cal Curcio family. And on the second page of the document, it requires that paragraph four on the second page, "The debtor shall pay as adequate protection all accruing real estate taxes for the property on the date, commencing on the date of this order." And that was last summer. There's been no real estate taxes paid by, by the debtor. So the real, so the debtor is not paying his taxes. The debtor doesn't have to pay its experts. I hope they're, I don't know, I guess they, they work for free. I want to make a point about Judge Radcliffe and his, his order. It's submitted by the petitioner as Exhibit 7, and it's that 80-page transcript that, again, make sure your eyes glass over. Judge Radcliffe, in that, I read the whole transcript. Never once was it discussed with Judge Radcliffe, or was Judge Radcliffe made aware of the fact that the subdivision, the lot that was before him was an illegal lot? So query, how would Judge Radcliffe have ruled if he knew that the entire parcel was 15.3 acres, not the 3.6 that was presented to him at the time? Oh, by the way, now it's 4.6 acres. If, how would Judge Radcliffe have ruled if he knew that the entire parcel has wetlands on it? By law, when you go for subdivision approval and there's wetlands on a property, you've got to go to wetlands. So Judge Radcliffe was not told that. Certainly Attorney Bellis didn't volunteer it. What's interesting also, though, about the, the document, the transcript, if you read through it, is the conversation with Attorney Bellis and Judge Radcliffe. It's on the record at page 73 of that entire transcript, and I'm going to, I've got enough copies for everybody. Wait for it to go around a little bit. It's, there's only, it's a one-page document. The discussion with Judge Bellis, with Attorney Bellis and Judge Radcliffe was that they were talking about approval subject to another, and Attorney Bellis says, "I don't think they can do that. I don't think that they can make an approval subject to another, subject to wetlands, Your Honor." And that was at one. And that was at line, starting at line 11. And then at line 15, and Judge Radcliffe states, that's the court, like, subject to sewer, they can't do that, something like that. Yeah. If there's sewers, and Attorney Bellis states, if there's sewers, usually you go to the sewer commission first. Well, he didn't do that. And it states, and then the court says, yes, the same thing would be true of wetlands. And Attorney Bellis says, yes. So Query, why didn't they go, if Attorney Bellis knows that's what happens, why didn't they go to WPCA first? Why are they making you do all this work when WPCA may not extend the sewers? WPCA doesn't have to extend the sewers. And that's Avalon Bay versus City of Milford. They don't have to extend sewers. For the record, for those of you who want to see some videos of the witnesses testifying, sometimes the town of Stratford videos on the website are not clear, you can't hear. Excellent videos of May 28 hearing and June 20 hearing. I would draw your attention, though, if you're going to watch the videos, to the testimony of the experts, including Mr. Silva, who doesn't give you any hard facts, and it's pretty clear when you listen to him testify, that there's a lot of holes in this application, a lot of blank spaces. So these are videos from June, from the June 20 hearing and the May 28 hearing, there's Now, get briefly to another issue with the petitions, and then go back, back into the formal presentation of the books that I gave you. You know, I started looking at the application, it's defective. The applications are both defective, and I'll tell you, give you reasons why. The application for the site plan was signed by Attorney Bellis as agent for the 500 North Avenue. Attorney Bellis was never approved by the bankruptcy court to be an agent for 500 North Avenue when he signed this document. You've got the docket sheet for the bankruptcy court in the record. There's no approval of Attorney Bellis to be involved in this application. There's no A2 survey. There's still no A2 survey in the file. Maybe it went on miraculously show up tonight. But that was the condition of filing this application, an A2 survey. There's no A2 survey. Another issue was notice to all the property owners. Remember, this is a 15.3 acre parcel. It's not 3.6, or maybe now it's 4.6. Notice of all the property owners in the butters around the 15.3 acre 795 James Farm Road was not made. There's no information of who signed the application, the site plan application. There's, appears to be a signature, but we don't know who it is and the position or standing of the person. Doesn't say 500 LLC by somebody. It's not at all clear what their position is. It could be the, you know, it could be the, the guy who supplies the linens to the property for all we know. We don't know who this guy is. It looks, it looks to be a man's signature. And of course, there was no permission from the bankruptcy court to submit this application to this commission. As to the zone change, same basic story, the application's defective. No info, information on who signed the application on behalf of the petitioner. We don't know who the person is, or the background or standing. We know that 500 North Avenue is in bankruptcy, and there's no authority to file the application. There's no A2 survey, which is a requirement of the application. Still no A2 survey. In fact, this application should not have been accepted, and it should be denied because it's not complete. Notice to all, all butters? Well, I don't think so, because it's a 15.3 acre legal parcel. They didn't do it. And no permission, and again, the lacking of the permission from the bankruptcy court. So the application is fatal from the beginning all the way through to the end. Additionally, the application is an application for a 3.68 acre parcel. The application before you is now for a 4.6 acre parcel. The legal description in the application is the same legal description that's on that false deed that is included in the file. So the application doesn't conform to the cycling at all, because it's off by a whole acre in size. Again, fatally defective, it should be denied just for, just because it's incredibly sloppy. I'm going to finish up with the retaining wall, and then we're going to bring Mr. Isaac back up. Part of the issue of the retaining wall is the, and I'm going to go back to my, the big booklet I gave you. Exhibit 21, if you could turn to that. This is the easement that Mr. Silva didn't know anything about. And he knew, he knows roughly there's an easement there, but he didn't know the terms of it. And I'm going to flip to, what is the second page in? And up at top, it's page 123 of the Land Records, the book in which it's filed. First, I wanted to draw your attention to the fact that the only rights that the easement grantor retained was the right to cultivate the ground between the poles and towers. Cultivate, that's it. Plant, plant stuff. But if you look at the paragraph above, it gives Eversource, what was CLMP, now Eversource, the rights to do everything on the ground beneath their, cut trees. It's not just air rights. It's maintain, maintenance, the right to access their utilities. They have not just air rights, but rights all around and on the ground to maintain their lines. So I thought to myself, well, that seems like that's a pretty significant matter. You remember, I asked Mr. Silva about contacting Eversource. He said they didn't do that. They wouldn't do it until they got a zoning permit, he said. He said that Eversource wouldn't talk to them unless, lest they had a zoning permit. Then he backed off, and I said, well, I'm not sure what Eversource is going to do. Well, I talked to Carlos Carabat at Eversource, nice guy. He's in charge of the right-of-way department. He's the one who you contact to determine whether or not you can have activities in the right-of-ways. And the emails are kind of going back, that's the last email I had with him back in June, June 8. I asked him if he'd heard from the applicant, and he said, "I am not aware of any effort by the property owner to contact me at Eversource." Carlos said that he wouldn't give me an answer on whether or not they could do what they want to do, because it has to, the request has to come from the property owner. But then, you know, at the beginning of the conversation, I sent Carlos an email with the drawings and of the wall, drawing of the site plan, proposed site plan. And Carlos said, "I would argue that any change of grade within the limits of the right-of-way which puts a structure in close proximity to our structures or energized conductors is a concern for us and possibly a violation of our easement rights." And he said, "We would expect that the property owner would contact us and discuss their proposal to prevent issues." And he says, "Attached is the application." So the application is that last page in that section. That application is a one-page application that gets emailed or faxed or whatever, but it's a one-page application, and nowhere on this application does it mention whether or not you have a zoning permit. Really, all it says is send the application, send the drawings, and we'll contact you. Pretty easy process, pretty easy process versus all this. If they can't put, and Mr. Silva's already stated, if they can't have access into this right-of-way, they've got to modify the plans, they've got to come back here. Why would you go through all this headache, one-page application and an email to Carlos? I don't get it. Point is, they probably know they can't get it because of what they want to do under the energized lines. You know, you're not to sit here, this is not an easy process for you, for the commission, but you're not to sit here and speculate or guess what another entity will do. They should have done their homework before they came here and told you that they could get access beneath this right-of-way before they wasted everybody's time. I want to go to exhibit 22. I want to show you what the power lines look, the towers look like. Maybe some of you haven't seen them. These are on James Farm Road, very near to the site, and they all look very similar. This is just an open shot at them. That's how, how significant these towers are. And if you go to the next page, in that, in that exhibit, exhibit 22, the second page in, this is a blow-up of the site plan. It's actually full-size, 100%. If you put a scale on this, you can see where the yellow mark is on the, on the diagram. That's about, the wall is shown to be about 10 feet from the tower. 10 feet. Now, this is before, this is when they had a one-foot wide wall. Now they got a three-foot, three-foot nine-inch wide wall. 10 foot from the tower, and Mr. Isaac's already testified that to put in a construction roadway, it's going to require at least a 12-foot area to build this road, not including having large excavators or cranes underneath the lines. It's almost ludicrous that this could be proposed. They should have gone to Eversource before even coming here. That in and of itself is a public safety hazard. A wall near this power line, it's, I think, easily recognizable. Not to mention that the, that back building that's proposed, those buildings will be at wire height. They'll be looking right at the wires. And by the way, every, like, two weeks, the helicopters go up and down those lines and inspect the lines. They're going to be right above the houses, right near the power lines where these, where these proposed units are. Now, now is a good time to call up Mr. Isaac, if you're ready, Mr. Isaac. You want to come? You want to, because we're done with the wall and the retaining wall and the power No, are you ready to go? Are you ready to?
I can, I can, I can attack that application on the engineering aspects any way to Sunday.
Well, why don't you, why don't you go ahead and do your, do your bit?
Okay. Yesterday, I'll state my name, Richard Isaac, 570 James Farm Road.
You just talk into the microphone.
Okay, sorry, okay. Do I need to restate my credentials or that's?
It's good practice.
Okay, I'm a professional engineer. I've been practicing engineering in the state of Connecticut for over 40 years. Yesterday, there was quite a bit of discussion about sewer installation to James Farm Road. Would you have to close the road down to install it? Maybe you don't. I think Mr. Silva even said at one time, we'll put it in the shoulder so that we can maintain traffic on James Farm Road. You can't put it in the shoulder because we've got storm sewers in the shoulder. The only place that that sewer line can go is in the middle of James Farm Road. And on their, on their profile sheets, on their application, that's where they show it. What I have here is an exhibit that I would like to submit, and I'll, once you have the exhibit, I'll walk you through it. And it's a step-by-step procedure on the equipment that'll be used, or will need to be used for the installation of the sewer. And it'll show you that, at least the emergency response vehicles, the fire engine, that's station that Engine Company 4, which is 100 inches wide, which is eight foot, four inches wide, exclusive of the mirrors. Eight, so, let me hand this to you. I just want to make sure I have a copy so that I can walk, walk you through it. Okay. I'll wait until everybody has a copy, or do you want me to just proceed?
You can proceed. We'll eventually get the copy.
The very first picture on that exhibit is a picture of a typical sewer installation, which would be very similar to the type of sewer installation that would be formed in James Farm Road. What I want to point out here is that, take a look at the size of the excavator. It's a midsize excavator, probably a 40,000 or 50,000 pound excavator. Also note that inside the trench is a trench box. OSHA regulations require that, that a trench must be shored when you need, when you have a worker in it, and it's over five feet deep. Five feet or more deep, it must be shored. According to the sewer profile that's been submitted with the application, the sewer depth is as much as 13 feet, some places. So that photograph just kind of puts in perspective the type of equipment, the trench box and so forth that would be needed to install the sewer. Photograph B on the next page is another photograph. And again, you can see, you've got a decent-sized excavator there, you have a trench box. And you can see the man is standing in the bottom of the trench. If he's six feet tall, that trench box is about seven, seven and a half feet tall, which is just about the size of the trench box that'll be needed to install the sewers on James Farm Road. In fact, what they'll have to do is double-stack these trench boxes, because they have to cut almost 15 feet into the road. So they have to shore that side of that excavation a good 15 feet. They'll need, they'll need stacked trench boxes. And you can see the, on the right side of the photograph, you can see the back of a triaxle. Obviously, there's no place to dispose of the spoil when it comes out of the trench. You have to have a triaxle adjacent to the excavation to receive the spoil and then drive off and deposit it or place it wherever. So you can see from photograph B, too, there's just no room. There's no, there's no room on the road. The road is, all the equipment, the materials, the workers, so forth, they will occupy the full space of that road. There won't be any way that any kind of traffic can pass that. So on the next page is a trench box. The size of the equipment will be determined by the reach and the depth of the trench and the lifting requirements for the trench box. Now, I'm assuming that pipe is 12 foot long. You'll need a 14-foot-long trench box to satisfy that. So I highlighted in yellow a trench box that's seven and a half feet high, 14 feet long. It weighs 3,450 pounds. So now we need a piece of equipment that can handle a trench box of that size and that weight. So what I did was, I went to the Caterpillar website, and I perused the different excavators that they offer. This is under the, this is under the small excavators, actually. I looked at an excavator that would meet the requirements that I just talked about, and the excavator, the 311F, is an excavator that would meet the conditions that it has to satisfy to put the sewers in on James Farm Road. It's a 28,000 pound excavator. Eh, you know, not a 30, not a 40, 28,000 pound excavator. So that page here just shows you what the, what the weight of the excavator is. You go to the next page, these are important dimensions. Down here, with 24-inch shoes on that excavator, the distance eight in that picture on the left is eight foot six inches. That means the out-to-out of the treads on that excavator is eight and a half feet. Now, the other thing that I want you to notice is the tail swing radius. That's noted as five foot nine inches. So what it's saying is that when that swings, if it swings, and it has to swing, the tail is going to stick out one and a half feet, one foot six inches beyond the extreme limit of the track. So you don't need eight foot six inches, you need another three foot on top of that. You need 11 foot six inches for that excavator to be able to maneuver during the operation. So let's just say 12 feet, all right? James Farm Road is about 30 feet curb-to-curb. That leaves you about 18 feet. Your sewer line is down the middle of the road. 18 feet divided by two is nine feet. At best, you have nine feet between the limits of the excavator operation, which you, which you want to have some safety factor in there, so you probably want to even reduce that even further. At best, you might have eight feet available between the, between the clearance zone of this excavator and the edge of pavement on James Farm Road. Now you've got an eight-foot, four-inch-wide fire truck, he can't get through there. It's barely, barely passable by a passenger vehicle. And as a matter of fact, at the end of the day, assuming that they work from 7:00 to 3:00, the trench, they're not going to backfill the trench. The trench is going to be left open. So what they have to do is they have to bring in road plates. They have to bring in plates that are probably an inch thick, that has to be able to span the width of the trench, and has to be able to span the length of the trench that's open. They just sit these plates on the road, and they go away. So over the weekend, you're stuck, you may reopen the road to traffic, and you've got cars, vehicles, you name it, running over these road plates. And it's, it's well-recognized that these road plates shift when traffic runs over them. Now you have nobody there monitoring the situation. It's very possible that that road plate could shift during the weekend when the contractor's not on the site and create a very hazardous situation. Not to mention the situation that you cannot pass a fire truck through that construction zone when they're, when you're actively putting in the sewer. Just a little more background on the excavator. On this, on this sheet here, it shows the operating ranges on these excavators. So on the left-hand side of that is the depth below grade. So if we, I said the trench excavation has to be 13 feet deep or more. I chose 15 feet. So I run 15 feet across and intersect that line between the yellow and the white, and that's the, the limit of the machine for the boom. It can reach out 20 feet. So to dig a 13, 15-foot-deep trench excavation, it can only reach out 20 feet. Now I said the trench box is probably 14 feet long. You have at least another five or six feet from the edge of that, from the edge of the, forward edge of the excavator to the rotating pin. That means you've got to be 20 feet away. Your rotating pin is 20 feet away from the forward edge of your trench box. That's where you've got to make your excavation. This piece of equipment that I'm showing here is the minimum... here is the minimum piece of equipment that can perform this operation. And by the way, contractor that gets the contract for the, for the excavation, he's gonna use the equipment that he has on his, on, available. More than likely, he's gonna have a bigger piece of equipment than this. So this is just showing you that even under the best circumstances and using the smallest equipment possible, you cannot maintain traffic on James Farm Road, or at least you cannot maintain emergency vehicle traffic on James Farm Road while you're installing that sewer. Now, two thousand feet of sewer. Just for argument's sake, let's say that they can put in fifty feet of sewer a day. So now you've got forty days. You've got eight weeks. That means eight weeks that you're gonna be suffering through this inconvenience while you're putting the sewer in James Farm Road. That assumes no unforeseeable conditions, no ledge, no water, no inclement weather. And that's, that's not gonna happen. So that eight weeks is gonna become twelve weeks. It may become sixteen weeks. So we're gonna put up with an inconvenience on James Farm Road. You may, you may run into blasting, you're gonna have the dust, and you're gonna have the, and if you run into water, I mean, that's another whole chapter altogether, because what do you do with the water when you pump it? You, you cannot discharge it on the site. You have to contain it, you have to use frac tanks, and you gotta take it off the site. I mean, it's the, installing the sewer in James Farm Road for a distance of two thousand feet is a challenge. It's a challenge that, you know, would be very, very difficult and provide a lot of, a lot of, um, safety risks to the, to the neighborhood in James Farm Road. And there's a school between Firehouse Number Four and the school, that's where the construction for the sewer in James Farm Road goes. There may be six hundred, eight hundred kids in the two schools, Flood and Chapel. We already talked about what the delay time is gonna be. At minimum, two, two minutes, maybe more depending on the traffic as you go through the Sikorsky interchange and the Merritt Parkway interchange. So all in all, my conclusion is that to put this sewer in, it's gonna, it's going to pose serious health and welfare issues to the people in the north end of Stratford. Any questions on, on the sewer installation?
We'll entertain some questions on the sewer installation.
I have one question. If, if they were to put sewers on my street, say, say for two or three houses, would they use the same equipment, the same?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the question.
You know, I'm asking, if the project was smaller, would this still be the same way they would have to put sewers?
The equipment size is driven by how deep they have to go with the trench and the type of equipment they have to use to dig that trench. It has nothing to do with how far they're going with the sewer.
Okay. Does it have to do with how many, um, you know, you know, there's seventy-two units. Is that why this is so complicated?
It has nothing to do with the number of units.
So if they put this on Main Street, it would be the same, same project to put these sewers?
Understand, the engineer has indicated that it would be an eight-inch plastic pipe in James Farm Road. How he arrived at that, I do not know. I can't verify it. I can't say he's right. I can't say he's wrong.
What you're, what you're showing us now is for normal sewers, anywhere.
Well, for this particular sewer, yes. And if you're putting an eight-inch-long sewer in and you're digging thirteen-
Because I'm not an expert on how big the sewer pipe has to be.
The, the, the big issue is the depth, the fact that you need trench boxes, the weight of the trench boxes, and the fact that you gotta maneuver those trench boxes. That's what's controlling the, the equipment.
But that would be anywhere that you put sewers in.
Providing those, those conditions that I just mentioned are there. The depth of the trench.
Who determines the trench, the depth of the?
It's off the profile. The profiles are submitted in the application. I scale the dimensions off the profile plans.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions too, to kind of piggyback on Commissioner Pepin's. So you're, you're basing these, the, the size of this dig or the depth of this dig based on what the petitioner has submitted into record? So this is based on what, what you've read from the petitioner?
That is correct.
And, and it's really the, the depth of the dig and what's underground that really determines what sort of equipment, what sort of size of equipment's used?
To some, yes, to a large extent, yes. Plus the fact that they need trench boxes and the size of the trench boxes and the weight of the trench boxes.
So the trench box will be an indicator of how, how deep or how large the excavation and installation would be?
Right. He, he would, he would size his trench box according to the conditions that he has to dig in. If he's gotta dig thirteen feet down, he needs a trench box that can, that can shore up the size of that trench for thirteen feet.
And I have another question too. With the, the, the plates that would go on to cover the trench and cover any holes and other irregularities in the road during the construction and installation phase, do you know how much weight they could sustain before, before they become unsafe?
In my experience, and as I indicated the other night, I have forty years of experience. Most of my focus has been on bridge engineering. When we replace joints in bridges, we use deck plates all the time because there's very limited amount of work that they can get done. Sometimes it's done in the overnight period. If that joint is still open by the time, by the time that they have to open up the traffic, they'll put a plate down. For a four-foot-wide span, you need an inch-and-a-half-thick plate.
And how much weight could that sustain?
Well, I'd need a calculator to figure that out, but steel weighs four hundred ninety pounds per cubic foot. I mean, those plates are, then depends on the length. It would be four foot wide. I don't know what length it would be. Usually contractors have these things in their yards, but it's, it's a significant weight.
In your expert opinion, if you can't answer it without doing some math, I understand, could a seventy thousand pound ladder truck, would, would it be able to sustain that weight? Or is that an impossible question to answer without doing some?
No, no, it's not, because, because as I said, for a four-foot-wide opening, the required plate size is an inch-and-a-half, and that would withstand the standard highway loading vehicle, which is a HS20 loading. So yes, a one-and-a-half-inch-thick plate spanning four feet could withstand a seventy thousand pound vehicle.
Okay.
The problem with this, though, is the plates have a tendency to move. As traffic drives over them and you get the vibrations and so forth, they can move. If they move off their bearing area, you've got a disaster.
And would weather, and by weather, I mean more water, moisture and humidity, ice or rain, or, could that also affect the placement of, of a plate over time?
Well, it depends on the type of, the time of year. If, certainly if they're doing this construction in the, in the fall or winter, and you have the plates down, and then you get some inclement weather, you get snow or something, it's, you know, it's a snowplow will just wreck these things.
Any other, that's it for my questions for the, the engineer and expert. Do, are there any other questions in the commission?
Just procedural questions. Is this only on the sewer discussion, or is this also encompasses testimony from last night?
Open to both. He's, he's speaking to both.
Okay. Just some general questions to start with. Your, your address is 570 James Farm Road, correct?
I reside at 570 James Farm Road.
Approximately how far away from the complex are you?
A quarter to a half, no more than a half, probably a quarter mile.
In your email to Versalock, you had indicated in there that you're reviewing for the town of Stratford. Are you being compensated by the town of Stratford? Were you hired by the town of Stratford to review the plans?
No, sir. I'm, I'm not being compensated at all.
Okay. So why would you put in your email that you're reviewing for the town of Stratford, indicating that you had some type of relationship with the town of Stratford?
Well, I'm doing it for the benefit of the town of Stratford, as, as a concerned citizen of the town of Stratford.
But you're not, you are not hired or any way?
I am not.
Any way affiliated with the town of Stratford?
I, I am not.
Other than a resident?
I'm not affiliated with the town of Stratford.
Another question. Let us throw a hypothetical out. Is it your belief that any installation or any sewer project that would encompass James Farm Road would cause a, cause a public safety hazard? For example, let's say that some, well, let's say that some wells failed. Let's say that the topographical situation was such that the water tables were changing and a few residents wanted to put in sewers. Would it be your same testimony that it would be a public safety hazard to put sewers in James Farm Road regardless of whether it was an application or a request from two residents or, in this case, an affordable housing complex?
It would depend on the design of the sewer. So, and each case would have to be treated individually. I'm basing, the information that I'm presenting you tonight, I'm, I'm basing it on the information that was presented by the applicant and his, and his set of plans on his sewer profiles.
All right. So in other words, what you're saying, or what you're laying to this commission is, is that if it was a sewer that was gonna service ten houses between James Farm Road and Alexandria Drive, that it would be a different dimension possibly than what the complex is requiring here?
Quite possibly.
Quite possibly. All right, thank you, sir.
Any other questions? If not, Attorney Bellis, if you wanna cross-examine?
I'm finished with my discussion of this installation of the sewer in James Farm Road. I have, I have other stuff that I can show.
Oh, if, if he, I'm sorry about that. The floor's still yours, Mr. Edson.
Anyways, while we're, while we're talking on the, on the subject of the sewers, what I'd like to do is also submit for the record is, this is a reprint of an article that appeared in the Sunday, April 17th issue of the Connecticut Post. The title of the article is "Wipes Blamed For Big Clogging Problems." Probably, people that read the Connecticut Post probably remember this article. But what it's saying is that people are putting these, these sanitary wipes that is so popular, especially the baby wipes and so forth, they don't degrade. What happens is they flush them down the toilets, and they grease down the toilets, sanitary napkins, diapers, whatever. All this stuff gets into a pump system and clogs the pump. I won't get into the, I'm not gonna read the article for you. You can certainly, I hope you would take the time to read it on your own, but, you know, just a couple of, a couple of quotes from here. "People flushing wipes down toilets are creating costly problems for Ansonia's Public's work director. We had four to five blocks of human waste spilling out of the homeowner's basement sink and washing machine because these wipes catch on the impellers and they stay there. They don't tear or disintegrate. And lastly, Milford, Stratford and Trumbull have each had plumbing problems with wipes. Almost always, the clogs are caused by residents flushing wipes, sanitary napkins, cleaning cloths, paper towels or diaper liners, or pouring cooking grease down the drains. It's a huge problem for municipalities. They have the resources to go in and correct that when that happens. I mean, they've got, people on call twenty-four hours a day. They've got the equipment, they've got the machinery, they've got the vacuum trucks. When the problem is, becomes known, they can handle it. This sanitary sewer pump station will be on private property owned by, by management company or whoever's gonna own this property, they don't have the resources that a municipality has. Those pumps clog. It's not only a disaster, it's a public health issue too. The sewage will, will back up and, depending on how quickly that clog can be unclogged, you're gonna have a mess on your hands or you're gonna have seventy-two apartment dwellers without the use of their water. So, may I? I'll just, I'll get into one other thing, and then I'll, I'll certainly yield the floor to, to others. What I wanna do is, I would like to, if I may, I would like to reference, I would like to reference, it's reference number, exhibit number twelve. It's already been submitted into the record. It's a letter from Environmental Planning Services LLC to Mr. Manuel Josie Silver, P.E., Rose Tizzo, dated May 21st, 2016. I just wanna read a sentence from that letter. By the way, this letter is authored by Michael S. Klein, principal professional soil scientist, professional wetland scientist. In the second paragraph below is the enumerated bullets. He says, and he's talking about the hydrodynamic separators. He says, "The inspection and maintenance schedule should follow the manufacturer's recommendations for the first two years, and the frequency adjusted based on that initial experience." First two years. Let me give you this scenario. These hydrodynamic separators go into operation the first two years, and we have a winter like we just had. We have a mild winter. We have very little snow. There's very little sanding operations on the, on the roadways. Those hydrodynamic separators, at the end of two years, they look like they're brand new. Property manager goes in there and takes a look at them and says, "These are clean. We don't have to clean these things every year. We don't have to clean them every two years." He just lets them go. Now, five years down the road, ten years down the road, we get, we get a storm like we had when we had Blizzard Larry. We get thirty inches of snow. We get fifty inches of snow. We're sanding that road constantly every day, every night because of the steep slope. All that sand is gonna accumulate into those hydrodynamic separators, and you've got an issue. Because the recommendation here is that you only have to look at these things for the first two years and adjust the frequency on that initial experience. Very misleading. Let me just bring up another concept too that is very important when you consider this application. Actually, two. I talked, I talked about one yesterday. It's, it's sustainability and constructability. Yesterday, I talked about the traffic impacts during the construction, during the construction of this project. You'd have trucks coming in and out of there almost eight-minute intervals. And of course, the traffic engineer never even mentioned that. The other issue, sustainability. This project, if it's built, it's gonna be there for seventy-five years. It must be sustained for seventy-five years. What I mean by that is, it needs to function as designed on day one, day one thousand, and by the way, seventy-five years is approximately twenty-eight thousand days. So it has to function on day twenty-eight thousand as well as it's functioning on day one thousand and day one. With all the systems that are being proposed for this project, highly unlikely that all those systems can be sustained for that time period, twenty-eight thousand days. The pumps, mechanical pumps, they last fifteen years, twenty years, twenty years at best. They have to be replaced. Rags get in there, clog the impellers up. Suddenly, you gotta get in there and you gotta repair them. It's not sustainable. The hydrodynamic separators, they have a finite life. I mean, I mean, it's not sustainable. Another, another quick issue, and then I'll yield the floor. On page... Oh, let me see. Okay. On the applicant's plans, drawing number SP2, there's notes at the bottom of the drawing. It talks about a maintenance plan for some of these facilities. Gallery inspection and maintenance plan. Number one. Galleries are to be inspected every twelve months and vacuumed if sediment depth is greater than twelve inches. In other words, what the engineer is saying is that we can allow twelve inches of sediment to build up in those galleys. Now, the galleys are four feet deep, right? So twelve inches is about twenty-five percent. So what he's saying is, we can afford to have sediment take up twenty-five percent of the volume of those galleys, and we're good. You're not good because you, you have not designed your galleys for storage that's twenty-five percent greater than what your requirement is. It's, it's just, it's voodoo engineering is what it is. And with that, I will, I'll yield the floor to anybody.
Yes, you may, Mr. Attorney Bellis.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for you, sir. In your forty years of practicing engineering- In your 40 years of practicing engineering, have you ever designed a sewer system for a builder or developer on a residential project?
I have designed...
I just need you to speak into your microphone, sir.
I've designed on-site storage steward systems, septic systems.
And how many of those have you designed for? I'm talking about sewer systems, not septic.
Well, that is a sewer system. If you're not, if you want me to exclude sewer systems, perhaps one or two in my early career.
Okay, so you've done, you've designed one or two sewer systems?
In my early career.
In your early career for a builder or developer?
Correct.
Okay.
For municipality, actually.
Well, that wasn't for... Have you ever represented a developer or a builder as an engineer for a residential construction project?
In my early years of my career, I did. Just to give you a little background, in my early years, when I first started my career, I was a general civil engineering practitioner. I did, I did drainage, I did site development.
Just need you to...
In my early years of my career, I did do site development, drainage, and, and things like, would involve in these things. However, in the last, to be honest with you, in my last 30 years, my focus has been on structures.
And how many of those projects would you estimate you did for developers when you first testified? Approximately?
Approximately, I would say, six.
Is it fair to say that the only time you've ever testified as an engineer, either in, is in the two applications in Stratford near where you live?
I'm not quite sure. If you're asking me if I've testified, I have been an expert witness in testimony in civil lawsuits.
No, I asked you whether, have you ever been, I know, I'm asking whether you ever testified as an engineer, as an expert engineer in any other town, town? Zoning hearings, wetlands hearings?
Again, in my early years of my career, I would say, years one through 10, when I was doing a lot of site development and drainage practicing, I did appear before wetlands commissions and zoning commissions in other towns, probably, again, maybe a half a dozen times.
Did you ever design or construct a gravity block wall?
Absolutely. I've, I've designed literally dozens, dozens and dozens of retaining walls in my career.
Specifically, the gravity block?
Gravity, cantilevers, segmentals, just about every type of retaining wall that is in existence, I have been involved in the design.
And are you familiar, then, with the procedure that you would install these walls, the gravity block, block walls, from the high side, not from the bottom?
It depends on the individual conditions. On this particular application, where you have very long geosynthetic blankets behind it, continuous blankets, and as that exhibit that I entered into the record yesterday went to show, the engineer at Versalac recommended that these, this, this geosynthetic fabric be about twice the height of the wall. So a 20-foot-high wall would be 40 feet. Now, your equipment would have to be a minimum of 40 feet behind the front of the wall. A contractor's not going to, he's not going to get the equipment to do that. He's going to erect the wall from the base of the wall.
You're stating that as a factor?
It's my, it's my professional opinion.
Okay. And so it's your professional opinion that this wall cannot be built from the high side? Is that correct?
Only with great, great concerns, bigger equipment, more time. Again, time is money. A contractor's going to elect to build these walls the quickest way possible, the most efficient way possible, which in my opinion would be from the base of the wall.
Is it your opinion that there's a theoretical possibility of a collapse of the wall if the galleys are too close to the wall?
No question about it. That is my personal opinion, my professional opinion.
Is it no question about it that there's a theoretical possibility, or that this wall's absolutely going to collapse?
I will answer it this way. If I was the designer of that wall, as it's shown on the plans, I would not put my professional engineering stamp or my reputation on it. I would like to sleep well at night. I wouldn't go, I wouldn't touch that wall design.
That's not the question I asked.
Folks, I'm sorry?
I asked you a very specific question.
Okay.
Is it, is it your opinion that that wall will probably, more probably than not collapse, or is it just a theoretical possibility? That's my question, not whether you're stamping it.
In my professional opinion, if that wall was built, as shown on the plans, it's, let me put it this way. There's always a risk with everything you do. The risk, in my opinion, would be extremely high that that wall could collapse.
And if you were to move the galleys, instead of being 12 feet from the wall, to further away, would your opinion change?
Yes.
How so, sir? Then it would not collapse, or it'd be less likely to collapse?
If it was designed in accordance with the industry standards for those type of walls, if it was designed in that, in accordance with the industry standards, I would accept that wall.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Attorney Bellis. Attorney Cubic, floor's yours, sir.
Thank you. Well, since we're doing experts, why don't we get right at it and I'll call our soil scientist, Dr. Stephen Danzer. Why don't you just state your name and credentials for the record, please?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know, I'll keep this out of the way. So we're going to back you.
Good evening to the commission. My name is Stephen Danzer. I'm the Principal of Stephen Danzer and Associates LLC with offices in Stanford, Connecticut. I'm a soil scientist, I'm a professional wetland scientist, I'm a Connecticut licensed arborist. I hold a PhD in renewable natural resource studies. I'm going to be brief. I, it's my understanding that I think last night or the week before, Attorney Cubic introduced my memo into the record that was dated April 13th, 2016. Just going to briefly summarize that and then go into one additional point. Regarding that memo, I'd like to bring to the consideration of the commission that I'm very familiar with the site, because as some of you may know or not know, I was previously the environmental planner for the town of Stratford from the period of 2000 to 2006, where I administered the wetlands permitting program on behalf of the Stratford Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency. During that tenure, I reviewed several projects adjacent to Roosevelt Forest, both near and within the present area of concern. This included at least one pre-application review of wetland boundaries that was conducted directly below this proposed site itself. So basically, I'm very familiar with that area. It's my opinion that the activities proposed at 795 James Farm Road are likely to affect the wetlands and watercourses located below that site. Therefore, under section 2.26 of the Stratford Wetland Regulations, the proposed activities are considered regulated activities. And therefore, the zoning application, in my opinion, should be referred back to the Stratford Wetland Agency for review. I base my opinion on several factors that are inherent within the current application. I'll just very briefly go through those factors. First is the geographic location of the site on the slope on which drains down to the wetlands. I'd like to introduce an exhibit. The town of Stratford, two pages off of their wetland regulations, as Attorney Cubic offers them to the commission. The first page is just the cover page, introduces what the document is from, and the second page is page three. And under, call your attention to, under page three, 2.26, where the wetland regulations define regulated activity. And I won't read it to you because it's here. However, one thing I might note, because I think it's been already kind of mentioned as a matter of record, or probably will be by the town, the town's consultants come up, is the question about the distance of the activity to the wetlands, which is in excess of 200 or 230 or 250 feet. There is a part in the definition of regulated activity where it says, "The agency may rule that any other activity located within such upland review area or in any other non-wetland or non-watercourse area is likely to impact or affect wetlands or watercourses and is a regulated activity." So in other words, the actual distance from the activity to the wetlands doesn't matter. What matters is the context of the site. In this case, there's a slope involved, so everything on top of the site ultimately has the potential to drain down to the wetlands. Theoretically, if those wetlands are 1,000 feet away, or they're 20 feet away, it doesn't matter if they serve as a potential receptor to pollution from the site. So to get back to my earlier conclusion that this should be sent to the wetlands, the fact that this, the activity, again, is 230 or 250, I forget which number, feet away from the wetlands, doesn't matter. What matters is that there is an intervening geography that plays a role in it. Second factor, in my opinion, is the volume of fill involved. The applicant, in one of their already response letters, makes the assertion that there's 36,500 cubic yards of fill. I believe town staff for the Wetlands Commission did her own calculation and, in one of her memos, and she said that it was going to be 100,000 cubic yards. It doesn't matter either number of volume of fill, that's an immense amount of fill. It's required an adequate erosion sediment control plan to contain that fill during and after the construction process. So just, just the volumes of fill alone should trigger the need for this to be sent to wetlands. Third factor, which Mr. Isaac has already addressed in his written comments and possibly in his oral comments, is the inadequacy of the proposed stormwater plan, the stormwater proposed galleries which are undersized, and the fact that they're going to be installed in fill soil. And the fourth factor regards the quality of the wetlands, which includes serving as physical habitat for state-listed species, which is the eastern box turtle, which I just want to give a couple of information about. Like to mention, in 2005, I was involved in a pre-application review of a wetlands line very nearby that site. And during that actual application review, I was meeting out in the field, I actually personally observed an eastern box turtle. So basically, that's within close proximity to, to the site. At the time, if my memory serves me correctly, I photographed it, I notified the Connecticut DEP, the DEP listed it. As far as I know, if you look up the Connecticut DEP, they're, what they call their blob map, which is their map that most consultants and other professionals in our field should consult when they're looking at a project to see if there's any listed species in the area, there's a blob in that area, blob being a polygon. And basically, the reason why is, my memory serves me correctly, is because of my reported encounter with the box turtle. So anyway, for all those reasons, and probably for any of those reasons, the, it's my opinion that the zoning application should be referred back to the Wetland Agency for review. This referral would be consistent with standard practice under Connecticut general statutes and consistent, inconsistent with my own experience in review of projects of similar scopes and magnitudes. Second point, not yet, not yet, in a minute. I'd like to do a very short pivot. Previously, just talked about the reasons why I feel this application should be sent back to the Wetland Agency for review, but whether it does or not, I'd like to remind the commission politely that they still have jurisdiction over erosion control, as Richard Isaac and others have kind of testified in more gory detail. I'd also like to remind you of section 3.24 of your zoning regulations under environmental protection standards, which say, "Any use that results in the contamination of air, groundwater, or the natural environment beyond the specific limits prescribed below is prohibitive, is prohibited. Any use given, giving off objectional noise, dust, vibration, light gases, or noisome, noisome, or noxious fumes and odors noticeable off the premises and other physical hazard is prohibited." So in other words, you do have environmental jurisdiction in addition to, and then complementary to, to the wetlands. Bottom line is, their erosion control is, their erosion control plan is inadequate. As been testified earlier by Mr. Isaac, there's been lack of subsurface exploration for the foundation of the wall. There's been lack of consideration for potential hydraulic loading on the wall due to the stormwater gallery that's, that is proposed to be installed directly up slope. I'd like to remind you, there's already on file exhibit 616 from the applicant. It's called the applicant's response to engineering. And in both cases, well, within that, within that document on page two, there were engineering comments about the need for additional information for the proper foundation design for the wall, and as well as questions about hydraulic loading. The applicant's responses were, "Burrings and structural wall designs will be submitted prior to building permit application, and the wall design will take into consideration the potential hydraulic loading." In other words, they didn't do it. They're saying, "We'll give you this information after we get an approval from this commission and prior to building application." It doesn't work that way, and you probably know this by now. You need that data in order to evaluate the potential for the site plan to be, to be a success. The erosion control plan assumes that the implementation, the implementation of the site plan will be successful. It takes on from there. Assuming that the site plan will be successful, the erosion control plan should ideally address contingencies that might happen even with a successful site plan. In this particular case, the applicant hasn't even demonstrated that the site plan will be successful. Therefore, you cannot reasonably make the assumption that the erosion control plan is going to be, is going to be, work correctly because of the lack of data. I'd like to submit a second exhibit, Attorney Cubic. And I'm finishing up. What this is, is a photocopy of a page within the 2002 Connecticut Guidelines for Soil Erosion and Sediment Control. It's basically the erosion control manual that stipulated that the applicant's obligated to follow in order to design their erosion control plan. First page is just the cover letter, the cover that says where, where I lifted the second page from. The second page is page three dash six. I call your attention to on the bottom right, a couple of paragraphs from the very bottom on the bottom right, under the heading Coastal Resources and Other Sensitive Areas. And just jumping right into the paragraph, these are things that should normally, customarily show up on an erosion control plan. It says, "Other sensitive areas that are not necessarily identified as a coastal resource, coastal watercourse, but which need to be identified and mapped include inland wetlands, watercourses in general, and watercourses containing cold, which, cold water fisheries, endangered species habitat identified by the Natural Diversity Database maintained by the DEP, which is now the DEEP, Natural Resource Center, and terrace escarpments located in the Connecticut River Valley." In other words, the applicant is obligated, in order to do their erosion control plan, to do a survey of the site, to look, find out if there's any critical habitat, any critical endangered species. In this case, like I said, if they even did a normal amount of diligence that they were obligated to do, they would have discovered that this area was habitat for box turtles. So...
Exhibit 13 in the book.
Okay, exhibit, oh, the, yeah, that exhibit 13, I guess, in the book that Attorney Cubic already introduced is what I was originally referring to as the blob map, which is what we use to do our diligence with. The applicant was questioned by conservation staff earlier in the exchange of documents about eastern box turtles, because I guess conservation staff also knew about the presence of these. The applicant's response was, "No discharge off the subject property is anticipated and no conservation application is required at this time." In other words, the applicant made, in my opinion, the fatal mistake of assuming the box, just because they're, that they believe that storm, there was going to be no stormwater discharge off the site, the turtle, because everyone knows turtles have to live in water, would not, would not be impacted. Again, the applicant missed the point. Well, the eastern box turtle is not just a right, is not just a wetland species, it's also an upland species. In fact, their nesting generally is not in the wetlands, it's in the woodland. So it doesn't matter whether or not there's discharge coming off the site with regard to, I mean, that doesn't, that does not preclude the need to do a box turtle survey. For all you know, there could be a box turtle nest within the actual confines of the proposed work area. And that's, that's really basic biological knowledge that I'm surprised the applicant did not explore. So again, I can't see how they could have successfully designed an erosion control plan if they don't know what the critical habitat and the critical resources that they're trying to prevent pollution of. To me, it just makes no sense. And that's basically for that reason, and any of the other reasons, my opinion is that the erosion control plan is inadequate. With that, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Danzer. Just, first I have a question, that's more of a technical clarification question. The document you gave about the sediment and erosion sediment control... control, Connecticut 2002 Guidelines, since that goes back to 2002, I just want to make sure that the DEP is now the DEEP?
Yes.
It's now the same agency, just with a different name?
Yes, it's the same agency. And regardless of that, these regulations should be referenced in your zoning regulations, as well as all the wetland regulations as the standards. And they probably use the old, this document is called the 2002 Connecticut Guidelines for Soil and Erosion Control. You know, the fact that it's DEP, BOL 134, it's now the DEEP, does not detract from the fact that this is used as a standard.
And with the eastern box turtle, are there any other protected species within that watershed or within this area or region?
I did not do that, I did not do a pre-survey, so I could not answer that. But I suspect, just with my knowledge of the site, there's at least one area that I know that's a potential vernal pool, that's directly downstream from the site. Vernal pools do have listed species, such as the certain salamanders. So I expect that that might be a concern as well. As far as other species, to be honest, I did not do a exhaustive survey.
That's pretty much it for questions. I, unless if anybody else on the commission has any questions for Doctors Dancer. Attorney Cubic, the forest juror, unless Attorney Bellis wants to put some cross-examination into record?
Just a couple of questions.
Oh, yes.
Dr. Dancer, are you familiar with the cases Machowski and/or Lord? They're both appellate court cases, where the court said that just bringing in fill and the possibility of runoff into wetlands was not sufficient to invoke wetlands activity?
I don't recollect familiarity with those cases. Can you hear me?
Okay, I can hear you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are you familiar that Judge Radcliffe had a hearing on this exact piece of property wherein the Stratford's Conservation Commission officer testified to the same things that you did, and Judge Radcliffe did not feel that it would have an impact on the wetlands? Are you familiar with his decision?
No, I am not.
Okay. So your opinion then would differ from the decision of the Superior Court Judge Radcliffe, who heard the same arguments that you presented?
That would be for you to say, not for me.
Okay, fair enough.
Just for the record, I've already stated that Judge Radcliffe did not say that this matter should not go to wetlands, or doesn't have to go to wetlands. The commission can send it to wetlands. But Judge Radcliffe's decision was that the zoning commission could not refuse this application. Remember, Judge Radcliffe wasn't told that this was an illegal subdivision, and the real parcel's 15.3 acres with wetlands on it. He didn't know that. Nobody volunteered it.
No, you didn't volunteer, did you?
Mr. Attorney Bellis didn't volunteer.
He said he'd taken enforcement action, is what he really said.
No, he said, "Or have a public hearing."
Attorney Cubic, the fore is still yours.
Some more housekeeping. We've got to get rid of these papers. This is five sets of a petition, 831 signatures and opposition. That's, we'll call that the master. Here's four more sets. 831 petitions, signatures of local residents who are opposed to the application.
Attorney Cubic, if I could just ask a quick question to the audience. How many people in the room tonight have signed a petition? Thank you.
In the old days, we just have to submit one petition. Now it's multiple copies. Okay, and our next exhibit is information concerning species, endangered species, endangered species in locale. One envelope and four copies. Next are four more letters in opposition. They just keep coming. These just came today, they're dated today, most of them, I believe. And all these are in opposition for a variety of reasons, whether it's traffic, whether it's delays in service, whether it's health and safety. They address all the issues. Concerns of wells and contaminated water, not wanting to have sewers or sewer assessments. So these are those four letters, that would be the master. And I have not collated these. And I could do that for you, or you can just take them. Yeah, thanks, thanks. Thank you. I do need to discuss some more matters. Moving right along in my big handout playbook, at tab 23 is Deputy Chief Gottfried's memo to the zoning commission. I put it into the package to make sure you read it. He's talking about service of ladder trucks being significantly impeded. He refers to the driveways as extremely narrow. And by the way, this was dated June 15th. This is five days before anybody was aware of the fact that the Bronco blocks that are called for would narrow the driveways around the building by at least another two feet, probably more. He was concerned about the apparatus being very close to the ever-source overhead high-tension lines. And he refers to, if you read the whole letter through, it's very clear he's talking, and it's part of the record. I don't want to read the whole thing. But very significant safety hazards for his firefighters. How about an example? This block wall with the hydraulic, with the chambers behind, water chambers behind it, fills with water. And Attorney Engineer Silva did state that, yeah, the chambers will fill up, but then the water will come out. But he said the chambers will fill up. The chambers are full of water, it's in a downpour, there's a fire, this 72-ton machine comes around the corner, over the chambers, by the lock wall extends its ladder out to fight a fire on the third floor, and the lock collapses. Yeah, I guess that's doomsday, but imagine the disaster. The full bucket falls back into the power lines and takes it all out. It's not the right place for this kind of development, and this is not the right setup on this property for a, for a project. Tab 23 also includes a copy of the specs that were included from Brian Lampart, the fire marshal. And the specs show the bucket truck, this large fire apparatus, and to give you an example of how big it is. Remember, Manny Silva's description of how a fire truck's going to weave through this property was based upon a one-foot-wide block wall, not a 3.9, 3-foot, 9-inch block wall, which, again, significantly narrows. When we thought it was a 1-foot-wide wall, if you go to Exhibit 24, we talked about putting in, putting in a guide rail. And you'll see Exhibit 24 has this red drawing of a guide rail. Well, apparently, we're not going to need the guide rail separate from the wall. Apparently, they can put it into the wall. There's some issues concerning the guide rail being in the wall. But most significantly, Manny Silva has agreed that it would be prudent for guide rails to be all around this property. So you've got the 3-foot, 9-inch wall plus guide rails all around this property. The property is going to be drastically altered, the maneuverability around the property is going to be drastically altered. Exhibit 25 is a letter from Deputy Chief Gottfried. I have the original, submit that, you all have copies of. Deputy Chief Gottfried determined that, and he used, in this response, I mean, he did a study to see how long, this is a study the policeman, the lieutenant, and the director of EMS discussed, we're talking about. How long it would take to get from the orange firehouse, the Ornock Firehouse, and he picked a spot along James Farm Road, 400 James Farm Road, which is on the other side of 795 James Farm Road. Normal response time to that point on James Farm Road, to 400 James Farm Road, is 1 minute and 47 seconds. If they've got to go the alternate route around down to Sikorsky Aircraft, it's now 4 minutes and 23 seconds. But that's with traffic the way it is today. That's not with all the traffic being rerouted because of the blockage of the road. There's no way they could estimate that. But I contend that 4 minutes and 23 seconds travel time is going to be much greater, especially in rush hour and all that traffic being diverted. Also, it's going to be diverted of the school buses and most other forms of travel. But there is the study that they've been talking about. It's now in your record. We were pretty, I read through Manny Silva's responses to a number of the town officials' comments, and I've got to tell you, somewhat flippant responses, in fact, very flippant responses. If you go to tab 20, and I just want to point some of them out to you, this is in the record, and you certainly have time to review it. Exhibit 26, this is a response to the engineering staff comments. Mr. Silt, the question is, the issue is, site plan, as to site plan number A, an A2 survey plan and existing conditions plan should be submitted with the plan set. Still, an A2 survey, they're being asked for it. And the response is, "The A2 survey, which the plans are based, will be attached." Manny Silva testified on June 20th that the A2 survey was already prepared. Why don't we have it? The next issue, Item B on the engineering comments, "The proposed private street will create an offset intersection with Alexandra Drive." And the response is, "A private street is not being proposed, only a driveway for access to the development." It's a pretty flippant response. It's, oh, it's not, it's not a street, it's a driveway, so I don't have to answer your question. In fact, they've never dealt with the offset issue. They're a big-time traffic guy, who in two different opinions, within a year over in Milford, said the offset causes hazards, doesn't even address it here, they ignore it. And they're so flippant, they say, even though in our planning regulations, call any type of accessway a way, or refer to it as a street, they ignore it. Going on into Page 2 of Manny Silva's responses, he does state, he stated, "A guide rail would only be installed where parking spaces are required," but then testified that a guide rail would be prudent all around the property. We've already discussed, it's already been discussed with the burrings and structural wall designs, that they're going to be provided with the building permit. They're asking, throughout this, it's replete with, they're telling you that they're not going to have an answer for you on whether or not the property can be built, the project can be built up. They're leaving all these blanks and unanswered questions, stating, "Trust us, this thing can be built. You're in a zoning capacity, it's your job to determine a site plan approval." If this is really a doable thing, you don't have enough information to determine if it's a doable project. You know, they talked about the H20 loading on that same page, the wall design, and engineering wants the wall design, was concerned about hydraulic loading. And Manny Silva's response is, "Wall design will take into consideration potential for hydraulic loading." And then they talk about Gallery Shelby H20-type. But Mr. Silva said in his cross-examination, that water storage will create no hydrostatic pressure. And then he goes, then he said, it's on the tape, by the way, "The chambers will fill up with water, but will drain." But when a chamber fills up with water, it's going to create hydrostatic pressure. And he's also consenting that hydrostatic pressure has to be considered in the wall design. And we know from Mr. Isaac that the walls aren't designed for hydrostatic pressure. When asked about the 12% to 13%, 13% steep slope on the private street that the engineering office calls it, Mr. Silva's response is, "The accessway is not proposed to be a private street, and therefore was not designed to be one," but ignores the issue of the 12% to 13% slope. It's flippant. It's just not an appropriate response to a serious, a serious design issue. And again, asked for structural plans throughout, he says he'll provide them at some later time. Asked about WCPCA sewer extension, the response is, "WPCA approval shall be sought. Why wasn't it done already?" You know, this goes on, and I don't want to belabor this, we have a lot of other people to talk, but Exhibit 27 talks about the fire truck turning radius. And this is a comment from zoning staff, and you have your comments. Again, the responses are quite flippant. But turning radius is provided, but that's before we all learned that the wall's going to be much thicker, and the radius, and the circulation is going to be greatly reduced. Talks about open space on Page 2 of that response, that a large contingency of open space will be along the easterly property line. That's between this row of houses in James Farm Road. It's 40 feet, 40 feet wide along James Farm Road. That is not open space or recreational area. In fact, with the increased traffic, it's actually a relatively unsafe area for kids to be playing. We talked about the Gottfried letter. We also have comments from the zoning commission that, actually, Exhibit 28 are comments from the conservation staff, and I think we've talked about quite a bit. Exhibit 20, actually, you don't have this now. There's one thing that I asked Mr. Silva about, and that was the pumps. And this is an example of how you're being asked to just to take on faith that everything they're saying can be done, and that you're willing to approve a project that you don't know can work. They called out, he calls out Zoller 810 pumps, two of them, I guess, for septic or waste removal. I've got three copies, oh, I've got three copies of this, four copies of this. These are the Zoller pump specs. The Zoller pumps that are, pumping is required for that facility to have at least 18,000 gallons per day. These pumps can only handle eight gallons per day. When I asked Mr. Silva, these are the Zoller specs, when I asked Mr. Silva about why he chose this, he said to us that those are only placeholders. But why wouldn't you design and put into your plans what you really intend to use, so the commission can determine whether this plan is functional? This plan can't work. This plan, this plan will fail as presented to you. And I don't think it's fair, and it's wrong, for them to assume that you, you're just going to take it on faith that they're going to provide a plan. Why didn't he do it before he got here, right? Didn't he do a lot of things? As to the school enrollment, Avalon Bay had 30 students living there this, in June of 2016. This is a letter from Teresa LaFoudas, Stratford Board of Edu, it's an email from Stratford Board of Education. So 50% would be, as Mr. Bellis wants to use the number, 50% would be 15 students in the proposed project, but that doesn't include non-school-age children. So we don't know how many children would actually be living there, but I purport that it's a lot more school-age children than Mr. Bellis has suggested. And by the way, there's going to be a lot more children, because they're not going to be in school, and there's no recreational areas on this, suitable recreational areas on this property. That is a public safety hazard. Where are these kids going to go? They're going to be out there playing out on James Farm Road. There's nowhere else for them to go. Okay, the proposed regulation has a lot of inconsistencies, and you got it, this application is defective in so many different levels that it should be denied, it shouldn't have been accepted, but it, we got forced to be at this point. It does not, you know, the application does not provide for 15% of the, does not provide, affordable housing has to have 15% deed restricted, 80%, and 15% deed restricted at 60%. The application only provides for 30% at 80%. So the, the proposed regulation does not conform with the statute. It's, and it should be denied for that reason.
Excuse me, Attorney Cubic?
Yep.
This was included in that stack? It was only one single?
Oh, yeah. This is, oh, these are tuitions. We already talked about that. I could submit it, but it's just tuition estimates for students.
Okay.
We, I don't, Attorney Bellis actually already gave you the relatively accurate numbers.
Just wanted to return to you.
Thank you. The application, the application calls for 0.91 acres in land, when it's really a 15.3-acre parcel. It started out as a 3.86 parcel, now it's a 4.86 parcel, but all the applications still reflect the 3.86 parcel, and it's not even been subdivided. The regulation calls for one building containing 72 units. I'm sure Mr. Bellis is getting all this down so we can make the changes. Site plan calls for two parking spaces, plus 10%, but there's only 10% extra, but there's only 146 units presented. The application calls for a minimum The application calls for a minimum number of two-bedroom apartments, where I think it should say maximum number of two-bedroom apartments. We talked about the legal description. And the zone change app is, the zone change application and site plan application is for a 3.68 parcel, not what is now a 4.61 parcel. They got the wrong property in the application. Okay, so I asked the applicant's engineer whether the property is going to be, the sewer line proposed is going to be a private sewer or a public sewer. Conceivably, you could have a private sewer line in the road. Conceivably, you couldn't. He said it's going to be a public sewer. And I can tell you that I don't think anybody is alive today that's sat on the WP, Stratford WPCA longer than I have. Ten years. And I chaired it for a while, too. And the procedure for sewer extensions is that if there's a proposed sewer extension, all the neighbors that are going to be affected get a notice of the, of potential assessment and a public hearing, and then there's a public hearing. And the practice has been, at least for the 10 years I've been on the WPCA, and I'm sure for those who else have sat on it, the practice is if more than 51% are against the sewer extension, typically the sewer extension is not granted. I can tell you that none of these people want sewer extension. I can tell you that it's not going to get granted, based upon that formula, because they don't want the sewer. Some of these houses are down below the road, they'd all need their separate pumping facilities, but they don't need sewers, they're on acre properties. They have, most of these houses have plenty of room for new septic systems that they needed. They don't want the assessment. There's been no, there's been no request, there's been no clear concept of how traffic will be held during sewer construction. Another issue that was raised is the visibility of these units. And I think the applicant's trying to lead you to believe that you're not going to see these units from the road. Well, that's baloney. The first, the floor of the third floor, the floor of the third floor units are going to be at road level at the very least, and then you're going to have the roof. They're going to be very visible. And they're only 40 feet from the road. The setbacks on these properties are typically, I think it's like 80 to 100 feet back from the road, most of these properties in the neighborhood. So it's going to be right there on the road, can't tell me it's not going to be visible. You can take out your ruler and look at the plans, and you're going to see how much taller they're going to be. Now, we talked about having to rely on all these other approvals. You're being asked to rely on the applicant getting WPCA, ever-source approval, planning and wetlands approval. Attorney Bellis has already said you can't condition approval on these things, but also stated that typically you go to sewer first or in wetlands first. They didn't do that. The fact is, this property currently does not have sewer access and does not have any of the other permits that are required. This property cannot be built today. The plans you have are totally inadequate, and the site plan should be denied. I think, and you're being asked, again, dozens of different ways to make a decision without the information you really need to determine that the property's going to work. Some side points, Mr. Waugh never discussed the offset in his discussions, and Mr. Klein, well, you got a chance to meet Mr. Klein. We filed a protest petition in this action, which requires the four votes for zone change, and it's also filed pursuant to Stratford zoning regulations 19.1.2. I referenced the general statute. And 19.1.2, that reg means you don't have to include the road space in between as part of the calculation of the land. We have much more than 20% of the owners, much more than, much more than the owners of 20% of the land that have signed this petition, well in excess. You need four votes. If the zone change fails, then you don't need, you can't go to site plan approval because the site plan doesn't meet, won't meet the zone. You've heard of the many legal issues that I presented to you and why this application is insufficient, and I don't want to go through them all because there's a lot, but, you know, the application's not complete, there's no A2 survey, the application's over a smaller parcel than 4.6 acres, notice was not given to all the owners. Steve Bellis signed, Attorney Bellis signed the site plan without bankruptcy court approval. None of them have bankruptcy court approval to be here, they're engineers and Attorney Bellis. There's no proof who signed the application on behalf of 500 North Avenue. The deed on file is false, and it's clearly an illegal subdivision. You have to find, and I believe we've presented, and I believe there's going to be even more after this, substantial, find that substantial public interests warrant denial of this application. And this denial of this application is sustained if you meet, if we meet the burden of presenting sufficient evidence. We've hit a lot of different items and a lot of different issues. As to health and safety, there's delayed emergency access, there's road shutdown and traffic, there's no sewers on the property, no public transportation, there's inadequate sidewalks, it's a busy road, as is, it'll be made busier, there's only one ingress and egress into a steep slope, you've heard emergency, public safety folks express great concern for that steep slope in one ingress and egress. Traffic issues during sewer construction and sewer installation and construction of the site have not been properly addressed, nor the volume. The offset driveway has not been considered, and that was raised by a number of different officials in the town. The lack of dumpsters, there's inadequate, it leads to vermin and disease, and certainly trash going over the wall. There's been, the issue of sub-public safety as to construction near the ever-source lines, and whether they'd even come close to letting it happen. There's no place for dogs, where are they going to go? At least Avalon Bay had the decency to put in a dog park. Wall failure is considered not a theoretic possibility, but more, but a great, great risk of happening. Lack of recreational areas, and by the way, if they're going to put in more dumpsters, they're going to lose recreational area, Manny Silva's already let you know that. This commission has a duty not to allow a project that likely leads to health and safety issues. There's also the environmental issues. We filed a 22A19 verified pleading, actually amended one, and, you know, the concerns of environment are mentioned. You've got to make findings as to environment, cultural, we're concerned about garbage debris, we're sewer pump failures, you've heard from our Dr. Danzer. There's the issue of impact in wetlands, soil erosion, pollutants from the site. This project should be referred in on wetlands, and you're not precluded to doing it, denying it because it should go to in on wetlands. Judge Radcliffe did not say that. You should also make, you also need to make findings pursuant to 22A19 as to the historical and cultural value of this property. We put in enough evidence about that. And just generally speaking, this clearly is completely out of character with the neighborhood and not a suitable property for this project. Case law has been clear that not all properties are suitable for an affordable project. Something else can be put there, this is just not the right project in this location. And I think, I think I've got it all. I may discover something later, but if there's no questions, I'll stand down.
Do we have any questions for Attorney Kubrick? Thank you, Attorney, for your very thorough testimony.
Thank you.
Two-minute recess.
Yes.
Two-minute recess.
A quick recess? Yep. We'll gather in five minutes. This gives Attorney Kelly time to prepare.